He needs a mic.
Good evening, we're gonna start in just another minute. If you haven't filled out a card and you want to speak on any items, either on the agenda or something under public discussion, we'd like to have a card filled out, please. This is Sergeant Lawrence over there.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Switzerland. We are a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you, Mike. I have one card under public participation. It's, uh... Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta call the roll. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Kellum?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison? Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Okay, everybody's present, thank you. Public participation, I have a card from a Mr. Stroud. Is it Stroud? Yes, sir, come up to the mic, please. Tell us who you are and where you're from.
Good evening, my name is Steven Stroud. My wife and I reside in River Gardens. For transparency purposes, I want everyone to know that I do sit on our HOA and I'm also on the planning and zoning board here for the city. But tonight, I'm standing here strictly as a homeowner. What I want to do is I want to discuss briefly the FDOT plans for the circle here in the town. My goals are, is one, to state out some negative aspects, but I also want to employ the city to join in to see if we can get some changes made to this proposed plan. The problem that I see is on the north side of the traffic circle, there's gonna be a median, a proposed median. That median will separate, obviously, both sides of the road. What it will do is it will block four different streets from being able to get out and make a left-hand turn and head towards the port. But that median will also prevent us from coming southbound. Let's say we're coming from Publix and we're traveling back to our neighborhood, we won't be able to turn left into four of those streets over there. It affects Long Point, Sunset Court, Evelyn Court, and, uh, King Neptune. We will, there's 80 residences amongst those streets that will not be able to get back into that community unless there's a left-hand turn that's been provided for them. What they're gonna have them to do is to go further down and find someplace to do a U-turn, either on A-1A, take a side street, or go onto private property on somebody's parking lot and turn around parking lot so we can come back to our community and get back in. It's a horrible idea. We need to have a break in that median if this median is going to extend all the way down to Columbia Drive down there. Another major aspect that's really gonna be our problem is emergency services. They will have the same problem. We need to get a fire department in there, we need to get the ambulance in there, we need to get the police department in there. They're gonna be delayed in getting access to our community if this median is allowed to go in as proposed on the project. And I do realize the city council, and we're not responsible for the construction of that, but I would like for you guys to join in and see if we can get this project modified in some manner so that it would be more accommodating to those 80 residences, including us, that live in there too. One other thing that's not factual, but I'll state it anyway, it could potentially affect our property values back there too if somebody comes in and sees that we don't have the ability to turn in that community. So that may be a real negative. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to present to the council tonight, and I just wanted to see if I could get y'all to join in solidarity with the citizens to see if we can possibly get this change in this design. Appreciate y'all's time this evening.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir. All righty, that's the only card I have on public participation on non-agenda items. I have one more for later on. Okay, we have some presentations tonight. Let me get my book up here. We have a presentation for Fire Protection Month. Mr. Sergeant. I have an proclamation for National Fire Protection Association Week. This is coming up in October. The proclamation reads, "Whereas in 1922, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, named the second week of October Fire Protection Week in commemoration of the great Chicago Fire in 1871. 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, making it the longest-running public health observations in our country. And the goal of Fire Protection Week is to raise the fire safety awareness and to help ensure all homes and families are protected. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association Fire Protection Week throughout the month of October by raising fire safety and awareness and educating families, students, communities across the United States. Therefore, Robert Hoag, Mayor Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Fire Prevention Month in the city of Cape Canaveral and upon all residents, and called upon all residents of this city to join me and remind me steadfast in resident and maintaining awareness of fire safety." And this is presented to our Cape Canaveral Fire Department. Dave Sargent, thank you, sir. Mike? Well, I would like to tell everybody it's your birthday coming up, Dave. I don't want everybody saying happy birthday, Dave, but we just want to recognize you for your birthday coming Saturday, the 25th, I believe it is, of September. You're on Facebook all the time, so I watch all that stuff. But council, would you mind coming down and joining me? Three on one side and four on the other, please, here in the center. We'll get a picture of Mr. Birthday Boy for Facebook. Where is Stephanie? She's gonna put this on Facebook, right, okay. Come over here, Dave. We want you right front and center here. And council is gonna be on each side of it. Over here, Dave, we want you up here in the middle, right here. We're gonna go behind closed doors, three. You want the council all up here in front? Three on one side and four on the other, please. We have three over there on that side. With Dave. No, we just wanna... David, we wanna wish you a happy birthday. And your birthday present is gonna... Well, let's get Angela over here before we give you your birthday gift. We just want everybody here. Go ahead, Angela. You're holding up the train. I'm gonna move out of the way so everybody can see Dave's birthday gift. Dave, it's your gift. We want you to step right here, sir. And all you have to do is pick out the spot where it goes. This is from the city of Cape Canaveral and all the council members and all the people. Todd, it's your floor, sir. I couldn't wait for today, Dave. Happy birthday, son. Dave?
Dave, the mayor asked me to read what the plaque says, so I'll read it for the audience. It says, "The David J. Sargent Fire Station. In honor of his exemplary service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to his family, country, fellow first responders, and this community, the city of Cape Canaveral hereby dedicates Fire Station Number 53 to the legacy that Fire Chief David J. Sargent spent a lifetime building in the city of Cape Canaveral, September 25, 2021."
First of all, thank you. I'm honored, but I wanna say it's not just Dave Sargent. It's a council. It's the people behind Dave Sargent that has made this fire service great, starting with the volunteers way back when, in 1962, who did it all by themselves, all by themselves, till 1987, when the first paid personnel went in there and continued to do it. And those personnel, including people like Bob Hoag and his entire family, and Bob's puppies that we all raised and now work for Brevard County Fire Rescue, but one of them's still with us after 25 years. So, those people are what made it. They just make me look good, they make it fun to still come to work. And this council and every council, well, not all of them, but most councils have been supportive of the fire service and properly funded it. And our partnership with the Port Authority has made it even better. We can't go without mentioning them because the other two stations were fully funded by them. What a great thing for all of us. We split everything now 50/50. John's fire truck is really 600,000. And the port's half is 600. But imagine if in the next year you had to come up with 1.2 million for a ladder truck. You'd be raising taxes like my city, Satellite Beach. So, thank you very, very much. But again, recognize that it's not just me. I'm just the face that shows up and asks for money.
Dave, we have another little thing for you here from a special friend of ours.
Okay.
Read that at your leisure, whatever.
I have to read it?
Will you? Read it.
Okay, I have a little eye problem going, seriously. So, I'll let Todd read it.
It says, "Birthday wishes for someone special." And it is, the message is, "Gotcha. Love, Joan Calvert."
She couldn't be here tonight, Dave, but we invited her, but she couldn't make it.
Well, she's gonna get a phone call.
Yeah, just to let you know she was invited to be here.
Thank you.
All right, buddy.
Thank you.
Great. Goodbye. You're invited if you're part of this council.
You just have to tell us what phone and put it on, babe.
Probably behind you. All right, we have another proclamation to read. This one won't be a big surprise like that one was. This is a proclamation for Clean Energy Week, and that will be going to Zachary Eichholz. Zachary, come on up here, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our Zachary Eichholz. He's sustainability and all that stuff that we got going on. He's doing a great job. In the city of Cape Canaveral, unique natural resources are a foundation of our community. And the city of Cape Canaveral is committed to the preservation of our natural environment and is implementing common sense solutions to address our environmental, economic, and energy needs. And clean energy, including generation from renewable methods such as wind, solar, geothermal, tidal, and hydro sources, as well as energy source... storage, sorry. It's powering more homes and businesses in the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, and across Florida than ever before, and it's a crucial part of our energy future. Growing our clean energy workforce will help grow employment and economic opportunities throughout our state and for years to come. And as America celebrates National Clean Energy Week, as celebrated nationally, the city of Cape Canaveral encourages individuals and organizations to support common sense solutions that address America's economic and energy needs in the 21st century. The City of Cape Canaveral 2020 Resiliency Action Plan calls for the promotion, build-out, and adoption of clean energy to power the entity and the community and all the city-owned and operated buildings in the facility by 2050. And we must harness the power of city of Cape Canaveral entrepreneurs and small businesses, ensure government collaboration to assert the American energy leadership and dominance in all the global marketplace, and provide access to low-cost, low-emissions, reliable energy here at home. I, Robert Hoag, Mayor Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, hereby proclaim September 2024, 2021 to be National Clean Energy Week. In the city of Cape Canaveral, and I encourage all businesses and individuals to implement the cleanest, lowest emitting cost of efficient energy technologies available. And this, my young friend, will do all that for us, and I'm sure he's accomplished a lot of this already. Zachary, we're very proud of you here in the city, and you have... Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everyone. And thank you for supporting this. This is a great accomplishment. This was brought to us from the Florida Race to Zero, the nonprofit that we joined to commit ourselves to zero emissions by 2050. And as you know, the city of Cape Canaveral, working with our energy provider and on our own individual level, are working towards adopting renewable energy where we can for a cleaner and healthier city, moving forward, a more resilient city. And I'm pleased to say that by the end of the year, we'll start construction on the city's first rooftop solar array. So, we're getting there, and we've got several more scoped over the next few years, start seeing our energy bills come down, our emissions go lower, and be a lead example for Brevard County and the state of Florida and Sunshine State. So, thank you very much, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
All righty. We've had our interview. We got an interview with an applicant for the appointment to the Community Appearance Board. Angela Turlock. Uh, Turlock, are you here? Okay. Welcome. Come to the microphone, please. And our attorney will ask you some questions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm over here. Well, just a couple of formality questions. All of the information in your application is true and correct? To the best of your knowledge? Explain to the city council why you would like to serve on the Community Appearance Board.
I've been coming to Cape Canaveral since 2005. Became a permanent resident in 2014. And I'd just like to be involved. I am a walker, so I walk everywhere. And I do notice all of the things that are going on, the murals, the, you know, the traffic stops, everything. And just wanted to be a part of it.
Mayor? Could I have you speak to the microphone a little closer so that it gets...
Okay, sorry.
They have sometime a hard time. And as a reminder for everybody, just kinda get to your mic. Okay, council, let's start off down on, I guess we can start on Ms. Raymond tonight.
Thank you very much for your interest in serving on the Appearance Board. I served on it for about six years, and I enjoyed it. And I learned a lot about ordinances and everything. What is your wish for the city?
That's a very good question. It really is, it's a good question. Just for it to be, you know, a friendly, welcoming town. Not a beach town so much, but just a town that people look forward to going to.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Hello. You're gonna, you're gonna have some tough decisions on the direction or aesthetics of the city. And I think you basically answered the question. What do you propose for a city as far as, what do you like as far as appearance?
Okay. Wow, putting me on the spot here. As I mentioned, I do like the mural, like, on the back of the racquetball. I just think we need more of that. If you go down North Atlantic, you know, the bus stop and all the little metal statues that are there and everything. And I just think if we can maybe get some more of that going.
Just thank you for your willingness to serve the great people. And when you talked about walking through the city, I always try to encourage that. I think a lot of us walk. The city looks differently when you walk through.
Much differently, yes.
It slows things down, and the attention to detail naturally happens because you get to look at things longer. And I really appreciate that perspective. And just wanna thank you for serving. I think you're gonna do a great job.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Angela.
Hi.
Well, I just wanna say thank you for stepping up. We need people on our boards, especially the Community Appearance Board. You know, appearance is everything. And, you know, more art, more murals and all that is good. So, welcome aboard, and thank you for stepping up. And we look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, I'd just like to welcome you. And I'm sure that you will do a fantastic job because I got all my questions answered by two people, so... I appreciate you coming up forward and doing this. I think you'll enjoy it.
Thank you very much.
Quite active. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Okay, that completes all of our presentations and interviews. We got a consent agenda. We have, on the consent agenda, seven items. Does anybody care to withdraw any of the seven items?
Miss Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to pull number two and number... Number seven? Hold on. I lost my page, I'm sorry. Two and... The contract, yes.
It's seven.
Seven, two and seven.
Number seven?
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Nothing? Look for a motion to pass items one, three, four, five, and six.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass items one, three, four, five, and six on the consent agenda.
I second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Morrison and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Angela Raymond to pass one, three, four, five, and six. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
We're having item number two. Mickey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for John or Commander Andrews. I see that 138,000 is credited by the county. They give us that money. And I was wondering if, how that number is calculated? And because of the increase in calls in Avon by the Sea because of what's happening down there, is there any reason why we couldn't get more money from the county?
Mayor, if John could address that, please, John?
Yeah, the way that number's arrived is pretty consistent. I've been here about eight years, and it seemed to go up about 3%. And it basically, it was pretty consistent. It's because, and I talked to the finance director for the county, the sheriff's department. And like, this year, it went up only 1.65%. And that's dictated by a CPI, and that's what the CPI is. There's certain criteria that go into CPIs. They're dictated in different manners. In this case, the sheriff's department, there's a certain computation, and they have to go by that. And in their case, it's 1.65. I'll just give you something, a different idea. When it comes to, say, a waste pro and we're doing a CPI, there's a different set of criteria based on population or whatever. So, these different contracts, these different entities have different criteria on that cost-performance index. So, that's how that's determined. I don't get to control that. But like I said, it normally used to be about 3% every year. And this year, when I talked to the finance director up there, and he said it's 1.65, and that's what they have to abide by, so...
Commander Walters, is there a large increase in calls in Avon by the Sea because of the 24-hour drinking?
I mean, there's an increase in calls, but it's not having a negative impact on our personnel and our services to the city. And to be candid with you, the city gets a great benefit by that agreement that was agreed before my arrival. And I think it was under Sheriff Parker, or was it under Ivy? When his first term. Probably it was during his first term, Sheriff Ivy's first term, we did that. And I think originally, when it was set up, it was gonna be for two deputies, and they figured out an average salary was a starting point for two deputies so that we can cover Avon by the Sea. But you look at the comparison of calls of the city versus Avon by the Sea, it's probably at least a 90/10 split. So, you're getting a very good benefit for that.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No, that's all I had. I just didn't, I didn't know how that was calculated, and I didn't know if there was a big increase because of, you know, Avon by the Sea. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you looking for a motion?
Yep, I was gonna just say we'll go to the floor for, I mean, I wanna go for a motion, I'm sorry. I turned to Angela, gonna say if she had any comment. Do you have any comments? Okay. Go ahead, if you want a new motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 202113.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion for Resolution 20113 by Councilmember Morrison and a second by Councilwoman Mickey Kellum. Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, and item number seven. Miss Mickey, Kellum, Ms. Kellum.
Um, yes. This is the purchase agreement for the building next door, 7404 North Atlantic. I just wanted to ask some questions. Some of them were answered early. On how we came up with the 900 and 25,000? How much was the appraisal for this property?
Mayor?
You wanna answer that, sir?
The appraisal is attached, included here. Appraisal is at 770,000 dollars.
Right. And then, we had discussed the closing costs. You said are between 8,000 and 10,000?
Less than 10,000. I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. The appraisal is 770.
Okay, and how did we decide to pay all the closing costs?
That was the, one of the terms of the negotiation. That was the owner or the seller of the property wished the city to close all, pay all closing costs.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I can't... The appraisal is nice, the building is nice. I just, and I've been saying this since the beginning of the budget hearings, I can't go for spending that kind of money on a building that we're gonna knock down. And I understand the plaza and the campus. I just think that, you know, again, in this year's budget... I just think that, you know, again, in this year's budget, um, we have the community center that is getting finished. We have the culture center. We have Veterans Park. We have Patriots Park. We have Long Point Park. We have the splash pad coming. I just, um, you know, and I went back and listened to the recordings of the last meeting so I could, um, understand, am I making sense? Am I getting across my point? And my point is, you know, let, and when I went all the way back to last year's budget meeting and, and it was the same thing, you know, we have to spend this money on the, on the community center, which is awesome, and I took a tour, it's beautiful. And the culture center. And it just seems like the little things in the city, you know, have we thought about how we're gonna maintain all these things? How many people we're gonna have to hire to run these places? I, I, I like the idea, um, I just think it's not, not this year. I think, you know, we need to take, um, our time. It doesn't have to be rushed. Um, and, and let's finish the projects we're working on. Let's take care of the green spaces we have. And, you know, just save, you know, we talk about going to rollback for five years. In five years, we've gone back to rollback, which is great. But how many, how much debt have we taken on in five years? I just think it's time to take a breath, finish our projects that we're working on. I'm excited about the culture center. Veteran Center's gonna be great. And I just think that we need to take our time and, you know, get a survey. I got a lot of emails today about people saying we do not want to take on more debt. I understand that it's a low interest rate, but it's still debt and it's still money we're using from the CRA money that could be used on a lot of little projects that need to be done. It seems like these big projects take all the money and then we don't have anything for, um, you know, little things, acquiring green space. You know, there was a, a lot next to Wagner Park that I had asked way back when in the strategic planning if we could find out about buying that. It was a hundred and seventy thousand. And we lost that, uh, you know, somebody else bought it. And now, you know, there, there's a possibility, it's down by Harbor Heights, that there could be a Jiffy Lube next to a residential neighborhood. I mean, that's just an example. I just think it's time to take stock on what we have, uh, take a break from borrowing money and just take care of what we have. And that's all I have right now.
Okay. Ms. Morrison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a comment, I mean, this is obviously a big decision and I don't think these items should be on the consent agenda. So, I would just request, get councils to consider that, you know, we don't need an ordinance to say if, if there's gonna be a contract over a million dollars, I think that's something that we should, we should talk through, um, as a council. We only meet once a month as a council. And I know here, we talk with staff as much as we like, staff is always very responsive, but due to the sunshine law, this is the only time we get. And I think it's responsible that we, we talk through this. So, just as a, as a, as a request to our city manager and, and obviously with council's direction, I think frankly, anything of significance, um, just in the impact to the city, but also financially, if it's a half a million dollars, I'd say we should, we should be discussing that at minimum. So, the, so I'm thankful this got pulled and, and I wanted to pull it too if Councilmember Kellum didn't. The, my concern, I agree with a lot of the points Councilmember Kellum made. Actually, I agree with, with all the points she made. And the big message was that take care of what we have. And I think that when we look at this, the debt, I, I'm not against debt. I think that's a, a great way, especially low interest debt, to fund, you know, capital, large capital improvement projects. But if you look at what the city's done for fifty years, I talked to our longtime mayor, Randalls, who served this city for a long time and now serves as our mayor moriitis before he came in here. And at our fifty-year celebration of being a city, the mayor stood up at that time and said, "When the founders took this city over, they said, 'No new debt, keep us debt-free.'" And that was out at Banana River Park. And at then, I was a resident, a citizen, I'm still that resident today, just have the honor to serve. But I stood there and I was inspired by that comment and it really gave me a lot of respect for what the city had to do to be able to fund the essentials without taking on debt. And shortly after, the early two thousands, we saw a couple million come in for some essential projects, which I understood that made sense. And Mayor, credit to Mayor Hoag, uh, he, he served many of those years and was able to make the tough decisions to, to operate the city without debt. But, but what happened since two thousand and twelve, we were at two million in debt. So, not, not anything to really raise any major flags. Market values since then have continually, continually grown, which, so our ability to take on debt increased, our ability to service that debt increased. But we know markets go up and then they also come back down. And what I've seen over the past ten years, since two thousand and twelve, we had two million in debt. Now, we are roughly at fifteen million, fourteen, fifteen million owed, but the council has approved up to twenty, twenty-one million in debt that this staff can use for stormwater projects. So, as of today, we are, we are potentially at, at a twenty-one million dollar mark. So, from two million to twenty million in less than roughly ten years, it's ten times. And the types of debt, what the money's going towards is what I'm really looking at. So, we covered two mi, or twenty million, okay, and our finance director's made that clear, our coverage ratio is there for the revenues that we have. But we've got expenses that we know are gonna hit with stormwater projects. We have nineteen-fifties infrastructure in some of these areas. We're seeing flooding. I've said this, I'm becoming the, the person who talks about streetlights and it's a rather boring topic, but it's so important. But one hundred percent of our streetlights, since I've lived on Ridgewood, have not worked. I got an email today from someone who counted, and I haven't verified this, it was six the last time, but now we've got ten lights out. It seems like an easy fix, but I can't understand, those are the types of issues that I would fully support taking on debt if we needed to, because that's critical infrastructure, fixing the stormwater, fixing the lights. And then we, my philosophy is that we earn the opportunity to go invest in something like this as a nice-to-have before the need-to-haves happen. So, the debt growing, the type of debt, um, since two thousand and fifteen roughly, I mean, we saw it double, went to five to six million. So, we, we funded, so after the, the original two million, City Hall grew the debt, our fire station, and then the multi-generational facility essentially doubled the debt, six-point-two million roughly, the Cape Center. These projects, as Councilmember Kellum was saying, are underway. We all see the multi-generational facility. It's under construction. The old City Hall right over here is going to be funded or, uh, constructed here soon. Got two projects underway. And then the stormwater debt, which was approved a year or two ago, which I fully support that to fix these issues. The lagoon in this community is a concern to, to everyone. And so, I have a hard time supporting this because I'm concerned that if we add this on, the total project's gonna be about one-point-seven million projected, but to add on one-point-two million in debt today, you know, that's just, where does it stop for another amenity-type project? So, half of our debt roughly is towards these amenities. And when we finish our engineering studies with this, um, firm for the stormwater, what, what do we do when it comes back at five million? Or whatever it's gonna be? Well, now we're at twenty-five, thirty million, but, you know, ten to twelve of it's for amenities. Now we start breaching into that service coverage ra, ratio that I think's a concern because we, we didn't put the priorities down first. So, today we're okay, but to, to, I would rather take one-point-two million and put it towards these essential items first, have them taken care of, and then move forward with, with something like this. And so, the, the other issue, which I think we heard comments today from the public, from Jenny and also Mickey, is, you know, this is appraised at roughly seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, um, you know, when, I'm not an expert on real estate, but I know that valuation, certainly when I looked at the appraisal factors in, the cap rate and the revenue that you can expect from that building. And so, it sounds like to me that this property owner really just bought it a year ago for seven hundred something thousand. And I heard earlier a statement made that he did not want to necessarily sell it. And so, at, at nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I think we're, we're overpaying it in a market that's at a very, very high point right now. So, I don't, and then when we just look at return on investment, if this was, if we were using this property to lease out, um, or, or use it in the way it's designed or re-improve that property and to get revenue stream as an economic development investment, which you see some cities doing, getting in that, which I'm not recommending, but if that was, that would certainly change the numbers. But to spend that kind of money, it's called the make-me-sell price. You know, we always say everything's always for sale, it's the make-me-move price. You know, eventually there's a point, well, yeah, I'll sell it for that. And I feel like that's where we're going with this, at nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. Overpaying to do what? To demo it. And the asset, the valuation largely is that building. Well, that building, we're just gonna demo and replace it with, um, a park, a promenade that is, is gonna be nice, but the, the return that it's gonna give to the community, uh, to me, doesn't add up to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand plus the, you know, the three or four hundred thousand that goes into demo, site prep. One-point-seven million dollars is what this project's gonna cost in return. And to me, I don't, I don't think that, you know how much we could do with one-point-seven million dollars to fix these critical issues in the city? A lot. And I think all, this one parcel is gonna take in one-point-seven million. The multi-generational facility and the Cape Center have taken in six, seven, I've seen projections as high as ten million dollars. So, these two properties are eleven to twelve million dollars. And the funds that are being used for that are your tax dollars through a CRA that normally would go to the county, but they're supposed to be used to, to fix blight. And those are considered blighted properties, but let's be honest, that property is not the serious blight that I think we see in this community. That's not a big concern. And so, three parcels have handcuffed this CRA fund for the next five, ten, twenty years, and we're gonna have to service that debt. Do you know that, I mean, we could take ten million dollars, twelve, whatever it's gonna be, and do an across-the-board paint landscaping, these, and, and, and help all of the CRA district, which makes up fifty percent of our city? We could transform this community with ten million dollars quickly, plant trees, do landscaping. This funds qualify for the private sector. Homeowners, um, women, little old ladies who can't get out and tree, uh, trim their trees, they qualify for CRA funds and you could do it fairly, where everyone gets the, the, a proportional amount. Other cities do this. And so, to me, the way we're using this CRA money is very dense in, in one area and it's not providing the coverage that we need across the board. I don't think we should be using the funds to acquire property. We should be using the funds to help the private and public sector, um, address blight. So, with the debt increasing, with the very high price, and this not being a priority, I have a concern. But most importantly, and this is consistent with what I've said since the beginning, is that if we're gonna call this a community project, I cannot sit here and support this without involving the community properly. We have epically failed at this, from my humble opinion, and I say that from my heart, is yes, we put things up on the website, yes, we, uh, we advertise it, yes, we have, um, city staff meetings that are one direction, where the staff is presenting, that's all great. But if we're gonna spend one-point-seven million dollars, we could take five thousand dollars, mail it in a little postcard to every resident and say, "We wanna buy this park," just like I said, for the multi-generational facility. I was against the process. Come, if we're gonna call this a community center, let's involve the community. And then the community will feel like they're appreciated, not saying, "You missed the bus" or not saying, "It's up on the website." That's a very passive approach. And so, the least we can do for these amenity-type projects that we say are for the community is to not, within a few weeks, um, coming off, is to rush approve this type of debt, overpay for the property, not get the priorities done, but at minimum, involve the community. So, if I'm gonna even consider this, it would involve a workshop before we take one step further to say, "Hey, citizens, what do you think about this? Do you want it?" And I did that. I, I shared my position on social media, I emailed citizens, and I got an overwhelming response that they agreed. And a few did say, "It sounds good." But when I replied to those people that said, "It sounds good," I said, "Do you think we should pay for that before these essentials?" And most of them came back and said, "No." And that right there told me that this is not something that we need to be moving forward on today. I, I can't support this. And I, and frankly, I don't even know where it came from. I know we talked about the strategic planning meeting, but I don't know from the visioning or where somebody talked about having this as, as, as a project. So, there's, there's no justification for me for all those reasons. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, and thank you, Wes. Councilman Morrison said that I would like to see what you contemplate as a, a large, I don't know your exact words, a large amount of response, reference the, references project. I'd like for you to go ahead and send that to me, because my definition of a large, we're involving ten thousand citizens in our community, is probably more than a hundred. I don't know, do you know approximately how many, how many responses you got in a favorable? And I'd like to see a copy of the emails. How many favorable responses did you receive?
I'd have to go and count, I would say...
Just give me an, just give me an approximate idea, a hundred, two hundred?
No.
Fifty, twenty-five?
Probably close to fifty to seventy-five, within less than twenty-four hours.
Okay. Is there...
And they're, and they're still coming in as we speak?
Okay, thank you. Would I like to know, Todd and John, we just had the Community Redevelopment Agency Board meeting, and in that board meeting, there was the nine hundred thousand dollar project for the purchase of the promenade. And as I recall, it was a five-vote vote, including Councilman Morrison and, um, Councilman Kellum. Can you explain how we can vote for the project of nine hundred thousand dollars? And now, they are saying that they are against the project?
Mayor, if I could respond? Um, I, I think what Councilmember Brown is referring to is that at the strategic planning retreat, this was, um, discussed as a priority. And that, all of that got rolled into a strategic planning retreat report, which established the priorities in terms of short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term. And this one was in there, as an intermediate priority, um, under the sense of place pillar category. That entire document, that report, I think this is what Councilmember Brown is referring to, is that report was presented to City Council on May eighteenth, and that report was unanimously approved to include all of those items in that report. Um, and as far as the, the budget question and the CRA budget, John, would you answer that one?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Brown brings up a very good point, because it's a bit confusing in the sense that at five o'clock today, and at about five oh five, council voted five-zero on a CRA budget, okay, for five-point-seven million. Within that five-point-seven million, it contains, they voted five-zero, nine hundred thousand dollars for the city promenade, and they also voted to take on a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of debt, uh, for ten years to be repaid, because that is included in the debt service principal and interest figures. So, the project was approved by all of council about an hour ago.
That's what I don't understand.
So, that's a good point, Councilman Brown. So, that's a good point, Councilman Brown. In one meeting, voting for it, and now against spending the 900K. So as a finance director, I'm at, on the City Council, so I don't understand that.
It's, it's kinda upsetting that we were just here talking about this an hour and a half ago, and it was 5-0, and now we're discussing that they've changed their mind just that quick. I, I just don't understand it. Is it, is it the right time for, are you trying to get sway the public and for, because it's a political game? But it's obvious what this CRA budget and what was in there, and now all of a sudden, you've changed your mind. And I've got a couple other points. Councilman Kellum also said that there was a project that she was wanting to do, and it was $170,000. And I think by her own words, we waited and we end up losing that project. Is that correct? Um, we, we waited. The same thing right here. We, did you not say, we waited and we lost it?
No, we, they got sold.
Okay.
But I rounded up at the strategic planning meeting, along with this project-
Right.
And other project. Project don't bump to the top, and that project got shuffled away.
My recollection is the owner was not willing to sell to the city.
I think if we paid over the asking price, like we're doing this, we might have sold.
Well, appraised value, if we're familiar with projects, appraised value and selling value are, are two different things. So it comes to, it comes to the point, do you believe the property is worth that much, or you don't? But appraised value, if it's 700 and something appraised value, doesn't mean that's what the property is gonna sell for. Another point I would like to make is that I think there was some reference to if we buy or get this project, that, that, how are we gonna be able to take care of it, or that we wouldn't be able to take care of it. That's, that's pure speculation. I think every project that the city has taken on, they were able to take care of it. We took loans out for our fire department. We were able to take care of that. When you're talking about loans, now is the time, 2%. Where can you get a 2% loan? You can't. And the only reason you can get a 2% loan is because your financial house is in order. If your financial house wasn't in order, believe me, some of these cities aren't getting 2% because they don't have their house in order. For now, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Raymond, Mr. Flor.
I'll say that I'm very much in favor of this. I feel that the city has wanted to buy this property for a long time, and we've been dragging our feet on it. This was discussed four or five years ago. The city has always wanted to have a cityplex or a city plaza. I received telephone calls today and emails very much in favor of this project. I think that this will give us recognition as a city, a city hub. If you have been over to Rock Ledge, you could see their city hub. That has been a fantastic addition to their city. I think that this is something that the city needs. We'll be able to have our Friday Fest there. We'll be able to have different kinds of activities. We can have farmer's market once again. We'll be able to have food trucks available. I think, right now, I think it has to do with quality. People want to move to our city. People are very happy here. Our residents look forward to coming out for Friday Fest. Everyone has been clamoring so that we can do that once again. We need this space. This space will help us. It's right on A1A. It's something that has been talked about for a long time. We need to gather as a community. We have our multi-gen facility that will be able to talk there. But this is something that is more open. It will help us. We can rent the space out as needed. I think that people will find it very attractive. This is part of our community. I think that we've been moving forward. We build for the future. We do not build for the present. We have to have the future in mind for future generations. People will enjoy this for a long, long time. As far as debt goes, we are at the rollback level for our millage rate. We'll be talking about that tomorrow night. Just to give you an idea, a comparable city, Cocoa Beach, their millage rate is 5.9544. Their debt, $48 million. If you wanna take a look, this was in yesterday's newspaper. You can come up and take a look at this. We are way below. We're one of the lowest. We're doing a great job. We've made some beautiful decisions. As far as a sleepy beach town, the train has left the station. We have a giant port up here. We're never going to be a sleepy beach city any longer. And as I said, I believe we should move forward. I'm very much in favor of this. It's an opportunity that we do not want to pass at this point. We already dragged our feet on it last year. And I'm very disappointed in that. And I've been talking about this for the last four years. It is not, it has just not come up all of a sudden. And I think that our staff had tried to get it in the past. This is true. And I feel sorry that we have to pay a little more. It's the same with the multi-gen facility. We're paying more because delay, delay, delay. And once we delay projects, or try to add extra things to a project, like an architect design, it costs near a half million or more. Those things cost more money every time we drag our feet. I say, we move forward, we keep the city moving forward. Ask the residents. And people are happy what we have done in the last five years. And in the last 10 years, we made great improvements for our city. It's something that we can all be very proud of. Thank you.
Okay. I can answer a few questions from Mr. Morrison. We have had a vision back in 2009, I believe it was, or '10, and gathering places, according to the residents of this city, at that time, the earmarking idea was gathering places. And I still have the old minutes from the meetings. And I can bring them to the meetings and show you. Gathering places was one of the top things that the people of this city wanted. We didn't have nice places to go to. And, and we wound up with Manatee Park, basically, as started prior. We had, had places that people pinpointed they wanted to go to, that it was such a priority. And out of like 80, 90 votes at the different meetings, people were, the average, probably the highest pinpointed number I can remember was 42 out of the attendance of maybe 60% of that attendance. So these meetings kind of put together and drove what we call our vision for this city. And that was a vision that was set up for like 20 years. And we're only into the, probably the 10th or 11th year of that. And gathering places was one. There was a number of things that the people wanted that we really couldn't put together because of the cost at that time. That building over there, one that came up for sale before, was a million, million, I think his price tag was. We tried to talk to the guy, but he was kind of firm on his price. Things happened. We got into other, other things, like this building at that time. The multi-generational facility was a dream of this city for years. Took us 17 years almost to put that thing together of what people wanted. And that was all driven by the people. That wasn't a council. That was done in meetings. And there's some statements that Mr. Morrison made are true, but there's a lot of stuff where he's mixing apples and oranges with this budget. Enterprise funds and stormwater. We don't just throw the dollars out of every fund that we get over. Those are users' fees. And those users' fees are predicated on what has to be done to those infrastructures out there, not your avalorem taxes. Avalorem taxes are what we're talking about with this building, basically, and CRA taxes. CRA taxes is your tax dollars. But we've been through a lot of years with no CRA funding until just maybe, how many years? Six years, eight years?
Twelve.
And, and that's when you start seeing the city hall pop up and fire station get paid for in four or five years. And those are tax dollars that we never got before. We set our millage with the county at the lowest rate, when the economy was dropping and falling, and boom, we hit them with our CRA at the lowest millage rate that anybody has. So we do get a lot of CRA money. And that money can be used for certain things. The county is all for you to buy infrastructure. They're not so much in favor, like Mr. Morrison says, go paint somebody's house or trim their tree. Trimming somebody's trees, I don't think are really fly. That's kind of a erroneous statement to make. That's kind of a small trim a tree. But there's certain things we can do with that money, and there's a lot of things we can't do with that money. And it was a fight for this city to get that money. We were told no the first time we went after it. But everybody's, at that time, this county was trying to do away with CRA. So I was at that meeting. In fact, we gathered a bunch of cities, and we got us a lawyer from Miami, settled that idea real quick. But there's a lot of things that come into that money. And we can use it for anything we can do to build this city to a better city. That's the overall fact. And I think when we had our meetings, yeah, you missed the bus on the meeting for the, for the vision, but you got another vision coming up that you can get a new vision. But we have a vision that's been set by the citizens of this city, and a lot of us, myself, are still here. Those people have been here for, forever. And they were at those visions. And I don't think we should just throw all that out because we got somebody else up here that's gonna make a different decision. We don't go against that vision, in my book. I'm gonna stick with it 100%. I am supportive of getting that building, because it's been a vision of this city and the city councils to have a campus from one street to the other, all the way back to Pointcetta. Might take a long time, but maybe someday it'll happen. There's some other properties back there that are still usable, but they're not obtainable right now. And having all your stuff right in one whole city block, to me, is good. Years ago, we had to have wastewater out there. We had these people over there. This city group was over in that building. Now we consolidated it into this building, which a lot of people were against, but that was the future of the citizens asking us to do that. And that's what we did. So I'm, I'm gonna support this, but I do have a few little things in the contract issue that I'd like to talk about and get consensus, or not. I'm gonna support it whether we do it or not. But there's a clause in there that asks for when, if the city does purchase it in the closing, that the tenants in that building have to be evacuated in three days. That I don't support. I think we have people here that are in business. It might take three, four years before they ever even do anything with that building. You got a lot of due diligence to go through. There's a lot of engineering. If you come up with an idea of what you want, you're gonna have probably 10,000 ideas come from the council, the directors, the people, what they want put in there. That's not gonna just be a decision of the council. We already have before us a couple little ideas that the recreation people, the leisure services have generated and put for us, looked, and those have come to a public meeting. And I'm sure there'll be a lot more there, and that'll be the public telling them how they want that, that thing put together. But it's something that the public's asked for a long time ago, not just yesterday. And we did have a meeting in March to talk about that building, and it was a 5-0 vote to put it into the budgets. We did it. And now all of a sudden, it's changing. But that's, opinions change, but my opinion's not gonna change, because I've been looking 15 years almost probably at that campus that we talked about. The OIBM building back there in the corner by the library. We even tried to snag that. It's up for sale, but it's actually not in the campus. Those are things that we looked at a long time ago. Every item I have in there, it's, it's a small issue, but the seller is getting a, what I would call not a real sizable profit off of the building, some $200,000 or right thereabouts. But they're asking for a, a, a memory plaque and to be placed on their property indicating that this project was made possible through the community partnership of the family. I, I don't see that as a, a deep issue with me, but it's like this thing we had prior tonight for this, the fire chief. Yeah, I, I think that was needed, because that gentleman's done some great work. He's been fire chief for 20-something years. But I, I have a problem with that, because I think memorializing things for people that have really done something for the city. I could sell the city a building of mine and ask for a profit, and then want a plaque put in my family, but I don't, I don't think that's, that's not what plaques are for. So those two items, I'd like to change the verbiage about the two tenants that are in that building. I desperately think that those people need help with it in that respect. I, I wouldn't do that to my tenants. I have buildings, and I, I don't, I don't do that. I would put in my sale a contract that they have a three-year, four-year upon the agreement between the two parties, not just to tell them they gotta leave in three days. That's not fair to the tenants. And the other issue is the plaque. Those two items, I'm asking council, will we strike those issues out of there, and I'll support it. I don't have a problem with supporting it, but I just don't think that needs to be in there. I don't have anything else to say, other than I think, I'm following what we'd like to do with the vision.
Mr. Ashrock, yes?
Yes. Oh, the manager wanted me just to talk a little bit about paragraph 3.2, which is the existing tenant provision. I think that's the provision that you're referencing. The way the agreement currently reads, upon execution of the agreement, the buyer would, I'm sorry, the buyer, the seller-
Page number, Anthony, please.
It's paragraph 3.2, and-
There's a lot of pages.
I'll get it.
It's, it's in the contract. It's page two of the contract.
Okay.
So-
Just bring it up on the screen. He's got it. It's right there.
Upon execution of the agreement, there's gonna be a requirement that, I think there's a typo in there. I think it should be seller shall provide written notice to any existing tenant that the property must be vacated no, no, no later than three days prior to the date of closing. So it's not three days from the execution of the agreement, it's from the date of closing. And the rationale for that is, you know, there are some, two, I think, two existing tenants. My understanding is that they're really on month-to-month lease arrangements right now. And the thought process was that upon closing, that the city would take the property free of occupancy, given the city's future plans for demolition. They're gonna be doing some construction in the Cape Center next year, I believe, and the fact that the, you know, the city, you know, would preferably not wanna take, subject to a very loose month-to-month lease arrangement with the existing tenants. So that, that was kind of generally the rationale. You know, if, if the tenants do not vacate the premises prior to closing, then the city is going to be, you know, the responsible, you know, the responsible landlord and have a landlord-tenant relationship. And, you know, you'd have to manage and deal with those, those tenants, the city would, in the future. And not sure whether or not that would present some problem in the future regarding the city's plans, in the event that you asked them to vacate the premises, and they didn't, and the city then had to, you know, evict them from the site. So given, you know, give, again, given the city's intentions to ultimately demo this property and move forward with a different project, the thought process, it would be cleaner for the city if it took the property without the tenants occupying it. Now, ultimately, I guess it's the city council's decision, whether you have any problems with this paragraph- council's decision whether you have any problems with this paragraph, but I just wanted to explain the rationale. Did I miss anything, Todd?
I, I think generally it's, it's good practice to take it free of occupants because it, it gets more complex if there are occupants there. It gets more complex as the buyer.
I disagree with that, not to speak over you, but I disagree with that. I rent buildings. I have tenants. I change tenants all the time. I get different agreements. And me, I, I feel strong about this. I'm very strong about it. I, I gotta say, I have buildings I rent in Coco. And if I have a tenant that wants to leave, fine. I don't have a problem with that. If I have a tenant that I need gone, I've never had any problems. I had to have one time out of all my 20 years of renting, I've had one tenant that gave me a bad time. And of course, that was settled to my satisfaction. But to take a property over and tell somebody they got three days to vacate before we close, how do you know you're even going to close? Is question number one. Something could come up. And the other thing is, I think that if the tenants are in there, right now, I, I was personally looking for a building to rent in Cape Canaveral. I've been personally looking for a building myself. I found a place finally, but it was a large place and I had to bite the bullet and take it to get it and to move my company to it, in my office. So I, I lease and I, I lease and I do lease from people. To tell somebody that they got three days to leave, and you're not even really too sure whether you're going to close because that's prior to the closing, which is a bad point in my idea. But those tenants that are in there can't find a place right now because there isn't any place.
There's a clue. I, I believe, Mayor, the, the seller is here. We could get his take on the tenant issue as well, if you, if you'd like to hear.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I'm thinking that if we're going to be so apt to buy this building, I, I've talked this with you. You know how I feel, Todd. If we're going to be so apt to buy this building, these tenants that are in there can sign a, a paper that we can generate that they will vacate the property upon time when the building's going to be demolished. It might be two, three, four years before you get to doing this. How long does it take us to do the city hall? We're not talking about the money that we spent here, but we're talking about money over there that's not going to be generated in a year, a day, or a week, or two months. We don't really know. And I think it's totally unfair to the tenants. There's two tenants in there that are good tenants to this city. There's, there's struggling tenants. Let me put it that way. They're struggling. And I feel that if that's going to be the attitude of the city, doesn't want to work on something to find that, then I'm going to have a hard time voting for this. Because I think that's just downright not treating your businesses correctly when there's no place for them to go. But there can be something done, a paper. There can be a legal form that Anthony can write upon the city's time, when it's time. We don't know when that's going to be. They, they will be given an ample amount of time to vacate. They could, they're going to probably be looking for a place like I have been because they're aware of this already, that this is taking place. So, but right now, I've already suggested a couple places that I have found, but they're a little bit more expensive. And they're more expensive than what I want to pay too. But like I say, I have found me a place. I've located. I'm converting my office in out there and I'm moving my whole business into the building. So I have a problem with that. The plaque I got a problem with, but not as bad as I got a problem with evicting tenants three days before you close. I got a problem with that. It'll be a problem. But I think that we need to find a solution.
I just have a question. Is there a conflict of interest about a city having tenants in a building?
Oh, I mean, there is an alternate, I mean, there is an alternative, Mayor. And obviously, you need three votes for the city council to approve this contract. And the way it's shaping up, it looks like it possibly will be three to two. So, you know, if you, an alternative would be to go ahead and accept the building with the existing tenants. We could put a condition, as you suggested, Mayor, that the tenants be required to, you know, sign another lease document a month-to-month, obviously, is, is probably what the city wants in this case. And, you know, they would acknowledge that they, you know, would have to vacate the premises promptly upon written notice of the city. I mean, the current tenants are not, you know, having tenants in that building is not consistent with the, with the objective of the city for the future use of this property. So there would need to be a clear understanding that they have to vacate. If they choose not to, then it's going to, you know, the city will have the burden to do, take care of it in an eviction proceeding, which we certainly can do if necessary. So there is an alternative. We could, we could change the language in 3.2 to do what, what you suggest, Mayor. And that's not a problem to do. The other thing to keep in mind, you know, if you're going, the city's going to acquire this property and going to use it as a commercial tenancy, then there still will be ad valorem taxes that would have to be paid on the property because the property would no longer be exempt from taxes because it's being used by private commercial, commercial entity. So during that time period, there would not be an ad valorem tax exemption that the city enjoys when it owns property and uses it for public purpose.
We're not going to have an ad valorem tax coming in if we buy it. So throw the weight there where that belongs.
I'm saying that.
If we buy the property, the ad valorem falls off the property tax.
What I'm, what I'm saying is if the city acquires it and continues to lease it for commercial purposes.
Right.
Then the city will have to pay the ad valorem taxes.
I understand.
You know, to the taxing agencies, including, including itself. So I just wanted to make that, I'm not saying that's an impediment.
You're not going to be getting that ad valorem back either. I, I think it's totally unjustified to the tenants.
I gave you.
If we were buying that building and we gave them a, a year, that to me is kind of like fair. But to throw them out three days before you're closing, you don't even know if you're closing yet. You could go to the closing table and something could blow up right there. I've seen it happen before closings. So that's like, right there, you're, they, they have to move. And when's closing? Soon as you buy, you want to close within 20 days, two days or whatever. So that gives them just like two weeks or whatever time involved. It's, to me, it's not fair to the business. And I have a hard time swallowing that pill right there. That's.
Can we approve this with an amendment, perhaps?
Well, I'm, I'm wanting that paragraph to say something different. And I don't know what it should say, but I think if you close on a piece of property, those people are under notice by certain amount of months that they have to move. That will no longer, they're on a month-to-month lease, so they really have no rights to start with. That lease is dead that they're under. They.
Well, it's month-to-month.
If they were told tomorrow morning to move, they'd be in court. If we weren't even involved. So I don't, I don't think it's fair to these people. And that lease, the way that's written up, that purchase is, I wouldn't have something like that in mind.
But I gave you, I gave, I gave the council an alternative to paragraph 3.2. I understand your concerns with the plaque. That could be stricken from the agreement. If the council's inclined to approve this agreement, you can approve the agreement subject to paragraph 3.2 being revised by the city attorney and city manager to, for the city to accept, accept the tent, the existing tenants.
And offer them a 12-month lease.
I would, well, at closing. And basically, the city would take, subject to the existing lease, at the very least, you probably want the tenants to, you know, sign a different, different lease document. And again, given the city's objectives, I don't see why the city would want to extend any term other than the existing month-to-month term that they currently have. I mean, the writing, regardless, the, the city acquires this property and the tenants stay, the writing's on the wall. You know, the city has other intentions for this property and the tenants have to realize that they're going to have to vacate. And they can then, you know, if they're looking at their business long-term, they can either vacate before you want them to vacate, or they can wait to the very end when the city says, we're ready to take the building down and be forced to vacate by written notice of the city. You know, either way, you know, the writing's on the wall because the city's intentions, as I understand it, to acquire this property is for public purposes, not commercial purposes. So there is a way to do it, Mayor. You can.
That's what I'd like to do.
Okay. It's, it's the council's prerogative. I've given you an alternative. Then what's currently written?
I know there's a way that can be done. That's why I'm telling you. But I think that's, this way is not fair to them. And I'm sure they're actively looking for places, as I know they are. Like I say, I was looking too, and they're having a hard time finding places. There's just nothing that's for lease in the city that's affordable at this moment.
Mayor, if it is the, the wish of this, the majority of this council to pursue with these two revisions, one for the 12-month lease and one for the plaque, to remove the plaque, month-to-month for 12, for maximum of 12 months. Those two revisions, we should hear from the seller to make sure those two are acceptable to the seller.
Be acceptable. I have no problem with, the gentleman, is he here? The buyer? Are you the seller?
Mr. Shallow?
Yes, sir. Come on up, please.
That's what I was trying to get done, to make sure that the tenants have a better opportunity. And they're here with me.
Oh, there they are.
You know, I thought it was a good time to sell the property. I didn't think, I didn't want to get in anybody's way. I talked to Ron, the previous owner, and he said that the city had been after and after. And I started, I put a lot of money in that building already. And then I found out you guys were interested. I stopped. I haven't rented any property since then, knowing that this could happen. So I wanted to give you guys an opportunity before, you know, I did any more to it. Okay? That's, that's my position. So that's why I stopped working. I don't have any more tenants. I have tons of tenants calling to get in that building. So I haven't made any money on this property, really. So thanks for stepping up. I'm okay with that. The two provisions. Send me the document. I'll sign it.
In fact, I was trying to get ahold of your place to find out about the rent, but I found out. So I just went off somewhere.
Well, you know what? We, we took it all offline. We took it all offline after we heard this was moving forward. And I said, look, I'm not going to do this to anybody. And I, I talked to Belinda and Nellson about it. And I've been totally open with it. And we had negotiated back and forth about this. And, you know, I was at the point where, it wasn't really three days. We moved it to 90 days prior to closing, to the December. So we were talking about, you know, but after the, the closing date, you guys owned it, right? So at first, it was, I don't know, 30, 45 days for closing, you know, but we pushed it to make it longer, to get the tenants a position. And I've offered to help them find a place too. So.
Are you, are you okay with the change that we want to make?
Yeah.
As far as the contracting closing?
Yeah.
Because, okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, I'm just happy to get somewhere with this building, to tell you the truth. Just yes or no? Get it on the books. If it's no, let's move forward. If it's yes, then I'm going to go and start doing my thing to it. All right? Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. It's up to the rest of the council if you agree with what I had to say or not. Just.
Yeah, I just.
I do.
Everyone got a chance. I just want to reply to a couple of things. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond says this is a need. You and I have different definitions of needs. And if this is a need, my question, let's call it a need, is it a greater need than the critical infrastructure, the stormwater, the lagoon, the flooding, that's been in budgets that all of us have passed in the past, that we're not getting done? Talk about, we need this open space. Let's be honest, it's a half an acre roughly. Open space? We've got a beach. We got something that Orlando, Tampa doesn't have. We've got plenty of open space. We've got two waterfront parks on the lagoon of open space. We've got a multi-gen. We've got, I don't know, several parks, Patriots Park, Veterans Park. And to say we're taking care of it, Councilmember Brown, we're not taking care of it. Go look at Veterans Park and walk around and you tell me if that's a well-manicured park. It's not happening. And I agree with Councilmember Kellum on that. As far as saying that this is a gathering place, that is such a desperate attempt. This is what, this is, this two words, gathering place. I went back and I requested, you couldn't even get the file, it was so big, from the 2009 visioning meetings. I went back in 2017 and got that file. And I went through every page of it. And I read, and you know what I was looking for? The justification of the multi-generational facility. And I saw what that city finally got up, some things little. But gathering place, it specifically says, and we changed the vision, it was a gathering place on the water, on the water.
You're out of, you're out of, you're not, let me tell them the whole story. I can, I can bring the thing to you. It's not just on the water. There was a lot of places.
Please don't interrupt. Please don't interrupt.
Okay. But I'm just saying, you're just leading everything.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm, unless I'm out of order, unless you're, I'm out of order, please.
I'll come back at you.
Yeah. Thank you. I'd love to hear. And so if you can take me to a place where it says a gathering place, that the areas we need to focus on are the areas that were circled. As far as engaging citizens and the whole attempt to say, well, how many did you interact with? My process has been the same, and the, my record speaks for itself. I engage the citizens as much as I can on the big projects. And I see a reluctance from this council to do that. Because I don't, the only fear that I can think of, of why we wouldn't want to engage the residents before this is you're not going to like what the residents have to say. That was the biggest reason why the multi-generational facility, I wouldn't have even slowed it down. I offered a meeting in between, and I'm, and I'm willing to do it with this one, is that we don't, there's a fear of what the, the residents are going to do and what, what they're going to say. Because I can tell you, do you really need to see, I'll send you every single one of my emails, and I think you'll see what I told you is 100% true. But do you really think that, that citizens are going to say the question, should we buy this park, take on more debt for an amenity, use funds that should be for real blighted properties before we take care of the essential services? Is that some shocking statement to this council? That, that somebody's going to oppose that? It shouldn't be. And nowhere, nowhere in that vision, can you take me back to 2009? Nowhere can you take me where they said, yes, we want this gathering place before these essential services were done. So I'm very disappointed that this council continues to take on large amounts of debt to buy amenities without engaging the public properly. And you know what's going to happen? The citizens of this community are going to take our power away from us, and I hope they do it. A referendum will probably be circulated within this community that says that council for amenity-type projects can no longer take on debt over a certain amount of money without a citizen vote. And it's because of the decisions that we make up here, when they don't feel involved, they have every right to go circulate a referendum like that and to put that power back to the people where I think it should be. And they expect us, as their council, as their elected representatives, to engage them, not on fixing lights, not on fixing stormwater projects, but on a community project, there should be a sufficient level of community engagement. So I, I, I'm disappointed. And in, in regards to approving the budget, if I, if I voted down every budget because of one line item, I, I, I would never, I can't see any budget that I would ever pass. So that promenade project isn't done until we approve the contract. Yes, I saw $900,000 slated for the promenade, but I knew we got to pass this. We got to have two public hearings. And honestly, I knew I wasn't going to vote for it. And those monies can be transferred, moved, promenade can be struck through. So the overall budget looked good. 95% of it looked good. I'm not going to vote it down based on the one line item. And if there was any confusion on where Councilmember Kellum has stood and where I've stood, you've heard since, over the past several meetings, we've been against this promenade. And so this shouldn't be some shock that we voted, now we're trying to be framed as changing our minds. So if there is not a fear of hearing what the citizens have to say, let's have a workshop. I'll do it in two weeks. Let's engage them. Let's ask the citizens. Let's do it at the Radis Center. Let's do it at a park. And let's properly involve them and say, here's what we want to do. Let's show them where it was in the visioning. Let's show them gathering place. And, and let's then do something that we've never done before. When we engaged citizens for multi-generational facility, they said, here's a facility. And they showed no trade-offs. They said, everyone goes, looks great, similar to how Councilmember Kellum and. Similar to how Councilmember Kellum and I did at the strategic planning meeting. Looks great. But it doesn't look great compared to fixing these essentials first. And we say, "1.7 million for this? Show them a trade-off." Or, "1.7 million to do this." And I would be shocked if this council was able to get 10% of the people that would support what we're trying to do right now. So... That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just, I just want to say real quick, this project, Councilman Morrison has voted, has not voted for plenty of budgets for less than a million. For him to say that he voted for it because there are other projects on here, projects that were way less than this, he has voted for. And we're talking about a million dollars. And now he says he saw that on there, but he wanted to approve the other projects. I just don't believe it. He comes to these meetings, you know, supposedly prepared, but yet, when it comes time to vote, he voted on the CRA, and it was a 5-0 vote. And now that we have more people in the meeting, he changes his mind. I just, I just don't understand it. He voted on it. Stay, hey, admit what you said, and just, let's move on with the project and don't change now because you say that you saw some other things on there that you didn't want to, that you wanted the project to go ahead and move forward.
Since you addressed me, Mr. Mayor, I just want to briefly reply. Councilmember Brown, you've continually tried to attack my character as if I would vote differently because there's more people in the meeting. I put my position out on this way prior. Number two. Why, the fact, I have never voted against a budget over less money than this. Every budget I voted against has been wildly off by $2 to $3 million. And so you're misleading the public when you say that. And you can't take me to a place, and the citizens are starting to figure out they're being misled. We're starting to see it. We're starting to see the, the truth is going to rise. The citizens of Cape Canaveral are smart, and they're figuring this out.
They're very smart.
And to think that you can say, "I voted for something" because the attendance of them is not true.
This isn't time for politics.
Don't get into hammering each other.
And you're the only one saying politics, Councilmember Brown. I'm talking about the issue.
I haven't heard of any of it, but I just said you've been sitting on the council. Let's just get that out there.
So my process to engage the public, I got a code of conduct violation by our mayor, which suddenly disappeared. We haven't heard anything else about that.
You heard the rest of it, yeah. Don't worry about it.
Because, and I didn't get a violation. They tried to give me a code of violation because I was getting all these citizens involved. Well, I'm sorry, I'm doing my job.
That wasn't, wasn't over, just don't go there.
So when I, when I, I get diminished on when I engage the citizens. And Councilmember Brown did it again and goes, "Well, how many? It's not significant." Heck, we've had hundreds of emails...
Wait, you're going to quote me? Quote me right now.
All right, guys, come on. We're not going to argue.
So what my final statement is, is how many...
No, you're final. You're done. You're not going to be arguing. You're making a lot of statements...
How many citizens do you engage, Councilmember Brown?
Oh, plenty, but I'm not going to... I engage a lot of them, but I don't discuss items that we're voting on with other council members. That's your charge, if you want to know what it was. So you'll be looking at that. It ain't over.
I would love to know what...
Yeah, I got, I got a paper trail on it. Don't worry.
Well, please don't refrain.
You brought the subject up, so I'll just tell the public.
Don't, please don't refrain.
You and Councilmember Kellum down there discussed items on platforms that we voted, we're voting on. I have the, I, don't, don't check. We're through with the discussion of politics.
It looks like all of you are on the same page over here, so maybe...
No, no, I have not.
Okay.
I have not said anything derogatory about you and your actions. But you brought the subject up about me bringing charges against you. That's what it was.
Because it was relevant as I was engaging the public, I got in trouble. And I'm trying to get diminished again.
I was trying. Yes, I'd like to speak because I've heard some things that aren't entirely accurate. And I do need to speak about this. Because we constantly are getting this, and this cannot continue.
Everybody in this council room tonight has had the option to be here before tonight for all these meetings. This building here, we had many, many meetings on it. The recreational multi-generational facility, we have had at least four or five public meetings, or four, whatever it was on it. And we had years of discussion in council meetings before that. So it just wasn't something that we threw out one night in one meeting, voted for. "Let's build it." No. This building right here was under scrutiny, discussion, meetings for like 10 years. A few people didn't attend the meetings. They're all publicly noted. Everything's noted. Next meeting's to be noted. Everything we do is done right here, in front of the audience and in front of whoever wants to be there. So all five of us tonight discussed these issues back in March. For the next five years and the next 15, 20 years. Ma'am, do you want to say something? You need to...
No, I just asked, what is the method of all the votes?
Pardon?
What is the method of all the votes?
Everything is on the public's website, the city's websites. You can come into this city hall and ask anybody, a director, anything, you want to know what's going on. And they'll send you to wherever you want to go. There is nothing secret going on here. We're not throwing your dollars out the door like we're drunken sailors. Everything has been done right in front of public. No, no, I'm not saying that. I didn't say you said that. I'm just saying, it's been set up here tonight. We're just spending money, money, money. You're really not broke. I think this city right here is in the best financial condition of any city in Brevard County. You look at Cocoa Beach and Satellite Beach and all them cities that are right on the beach like us, they're struggling. They got problems. Their taxes are three times as high as yours. We have some very smart people on staff. That's what's done the city in the last seven to 10 years and got us where we are. And we're not broke by any means. Not broke at all. Otherwise, your taxes have been gone up. We needed money, you'd be paying four or five mils. You're less than four mils. Less than 4.9, whatever, 3.5. So we're not broke. We got that. You don't go anywhere, you don't get anything without that. If you don't buy this, buy that building next door because if you don't buy it, it's going to get sold. And it's not a dream of what this city's been pushing for, for 20-something years, is to have this frontage right here as a campus. That building is available now, again. We messed up on it the last trip around. That guy jumped in and bought it on us. We bought a building right here, and we bought another building behind City Hall and tore both of them down to build this building for less than $5 million. And to me, that was a buy. This building would be paid for in another three, four years. And then that money is going to be free money, again. So we're not broke. Don't listen to this, "we're broke" or "we're in debt." Everybody's in debt. You got debt with your house, you got debt with everything. But we're not broke.
All right.
There's a lot of funding out there, and the county has a lot of say about what we do with that CRA. We don't just get that handed to us. We're just starting to get it in the last seven years or so. So that's what you see all this action getting done. It's not Applearms that's coming out of your pocket. It's coming out of the county's pocket, let's say, because they'd take it and throw it somewhere else if we didn't get it, which they've done for years. And we were smart enough to take a move, and we did it and got what we got at the fair price that we got it at. So I, I'm, I'm going to support this, but I wouldn't support it basically with that clause in it 100%. I don't believe in that exiting tenants three days before you close. That's just not, that's just not good business. And it'll give them time. We can give them time to buy the building or to vacate that building if we buy that building. It'll take two, three years before you even do anything with the property. So I can't see that. I have my say, I'm sure.
I think you have someone that wants to speak. I'll wait. I'll wait. I wanted to say that I fully support the project. I think that, as I said, we're going to move forward. And I think now's the time to do it. You have to take opportunity when the opportunity knocks. And I think that it will expand our city. I think this is something that we will all be proud of. And I'm proud of what we've done in the last several years. And I have voted in favor of our budgets, year after year after year, because we have a wonderful staff, and they have done a terrific job. Again, I have to say that when the auditors come around, they get an excellent A++. And I am very much in favor of this. As I said, if you'd like to take a look at what other cities are doing, please come up, and I can talk to you about this from a point of view of the other 16 cities. I sit on the board for Space Coast League of Cities, so I understand this. And I want us to approve this with the two amendments. Thank you.
We need a third person on the amendments, and we're going to call a vote on it. There's no cards on this item. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there is. Mr. Brown, do you favor the amendments? We, you people in favor of the amendments?
No, I think the great, no. I'm not in favor of the entire contract, so...
I would like to...
Pardon?
Are we going to public comment?
Yes, we will.
Okay, well, I would like to comment after the lady does.
I was just trying to see if we had support for the amendment change. We do have the support for the amendment change by Mr. Brown, myself.
Yes, I have.
No, we, we do have a card on this property, number seven. I'm sorry, I, it got stuck in my folder. No, it's Kay Jackson.
Thank you, counsel and Mayor Hogue. I appreciate you letting me speak for a few minutes. I have a few questions. Number one, as a city, are you a revenue generating entity?
Really?
No, you're not. City governments are not a revenue generating entity. Instead, city governments provide services to the citizens. And I listened to your comments tonight and all of your information that you gave. Very interesting. I understand the bucket that you were talking about, Mayor Hogan, the fact that it's coming out of one pool of money that came from the county. However, taxpayers pay all of the city's expenses. You are not a revenue generating entity. There's no service that you provide that you generate income from. So no matter what bucket it comes out of, it is still out of these people's pockets and my own and every citizen within Cape Canaveral. Now, I'm sorry, and I get, I'm really shaking about this because has, has anyone on this council had any property damage from the flooding we have going on in our city? Is there one of you that have had property damage?
No.
I have, I've had property damage. And I bet you there's people watching on video or that will watch this replay if you don't edit it out, and people in this audience that are having property damage. Now, I'm going to tell you, when it comes to prioritizing your own business or your own life, you ensure and make sure your bills are covered and anything causing damage stops. But you know what we're doing? We are taking a thing that is going to be put right here on the main road. When that beach is what everyone comes to see us for. I have been to many Friday Fests. You know what? There, I haven't been to one of them where our space has not been adequate there. So I understand this is a nice thing for us. But until we get some of these cities' issues taken care of, I've lost a vehicle in that flood. Okay? It cost me money. I don't like that in the city. I want people's property protected, and these are storms flooding. They're typical summer storms. We don't even know what's going to happen now with the hurricane or a tropical storm that stays on shore for very long. So this is concerning to me. And I will say this, as I watch these things occur, I get it that people wanted to do this. I've been in the area a long time. We all know that we're here 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, that our demographic has totally changed in this city. We had people at NASA, mass amounts of NASA engineers, everyone else that were laid off and left the area. We had 6,500 people that left Sea Ray. All of these people left. We have new citizens in. And what happens when they come from cities where, guess what? Their property doesn't flood because we haven't taken care of existing infrastructure. Now, I understand that property would be great to have. But a great to have versus people sustaining damage, and I did. Okay? I had damage. It totaled my vehicle, one of those floods. That's not right to do that to the citizens. And as you sit and listen to this, I just ask you to consider the fact that if you haven't had your property damaged, and I've seen a wake going into people's homes on Ridgewood, I wish that you would consider that type of project because no matter what bucket it comes out of, we have needs that our infrastructure needs right now to get us to be the world-class city that you speak of. And no matter whose desires happened back in 2012, I get that. But times change, and you have to address needs due to the fact that things change. We have a lot of new residents in the city. We need to step up and do what's right for them as well as the existing residents. And I will say, that's why I'm running for city council.
Okay, I would, I don't, I didn't realize who you were, ma'am. Welcome to the purview. I would suggest you talk to this gentleman right here about some issues. You're correcting some ideas, but there's a lot of issues that you went through that you kind of have to understand. And he would be the man to answer those issues. And John, if you're dumbfounded by what I'm saying, I'll tell you what the issues are. But you need to, you need to talk to the people that handle those issues.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. No problem. Okay. I have a speaker's card. Well, we've got to close this item before I can do this because this is something relevant. And it's not relevant to the meeting.
I would like to speak again, Mayor, if I can. Just some notes I made while everyone was talking. You know, you talk about the visioning of the people, and we've been wanting this for 20 years. Did the people 20 years ago envision that we would be $15 million in debt? This, if we buy this building, it's taking $9,000 off the tax records. You say that there was a 5-0 vote at the strategic planning meeting. I do not remember a 5-0 vote. It wasn't even presented to us that way. It was, "Would you guys be interested in pursuing this?" And we all agreed, yes. Nothing was said about taking off a $1.2 million loan at that time. Or I would have said, "No." Because I agree with Ms. Jackson that, you know, we have to take care of the flooding and the roads that need to be paved and the sidewalks that we, since 1963, we haven't completed all the sidewalks in this street, in this town, in this city. Sorry, I'm a little... You know, Mayor Hogue, you said, "We missed the vote on the visioning." I was here. I lived, I've been here for 30 years. I was there.
I said him. I did not say you, ma'am. Let me correct that right now. I indicated Mr. Morrison. I said you. I pointed back to him, missed the vote. I didn't indicate you. I know you've been here a long time, too. So I did not indicate you. Just don't say I did because I didn't. Just to correct the record.
Well, you just looked this way, and you said you missed the vote.
I said, "Mr. Morrison."
No, you didn't. But I'm not going to argue that point.
Well, no, I'm not going to argue either, but you're just giving wrong.
The CRA was created to help businesses and residents and create jobs. We're displacing two businesses out of that, out of that building over there. And, you know, if we had CRA money, maybe we could help the owner with the facier, painting. with the fascia painting, programs that CRA was designated for, to help local businesses. Instead, we're tying up all the money again. And, you know, what, what is the rush? Why are we rushing this? Why can't we take, you know, we don't believe what I come or Councilmember Morrison comes and says, "This is what the people are saying." We don't believe that. I don't know why, as a council, we don't believe that. We've had a survey done in 2018 where we had the most people participate in that survey. And none of, they said they don't want debt. They want green spaces. They want, you know, a nice, quiet beach town. We don't believe that either. I just, you know, the duration of the CRA is 2040. Are we gonna tie up every single bit of money in the CRA until then and not be able to do the little projects that help the residents and the businesses in the city? You know, the comment about Veterans Park. 9/11, we had a service there. And the people that were there, I represented the VFW. We were there. And the comments from the people there were like, "Why isn't this taken care of better?" And I said, you know, we're working on that. We're revitalizing Veterans Park, which is important to the 1,600 veterans in our city. And the people said to me, "If you can't maintain this park, how are you gonna maintain a better park?" This is my concern, is how we have the community center, we have the culture center, we have Veterans Park, we have Patriots Park, we have Lawn Point Park, we have a splash pad, Banana River, Manatee River. As gathering places, are we gonna be able to maintain these, you know, down the road? Do we need more employees? Do we need more equipment? I just think, just this year, you know, we could help small businesses. We have plastic flowers at the entrance of North Atlantic on, from the port. Why? A $30 million budget and we have plastic flowers? I mean, it's little things like that that are noticeable to the walking and biking people that come here. I just, and, you know, to say that it was a 5-0 vote, that's misleading. And I just, I, it was not presented to us that way. And I just don't think that this is right at this time before we... You know, at the August, I listened to the recordings of the meetings, like I said before. And at that meeting, Councilmember Brown, you said, whatever we need to do to address the flooding, the roads in the city and the things that we need in infrastructure, we need to focus on that from this budget or the American Recovery Act money, which is all designated for a certain thing. But, you know, this is where the rubber hits the road. This is where we have to make a decision. What is our priorities? And it's nice to have that project. It's a great project, but I cannot, the people, this lady whose place is flooded, the people on Lincoln Avenue who get flooded, I can't say, "Well, we're gonna fix that later, but we're gonna get this big giant building and knock it down." I just, I can't support it. And the people that I talk to out there every day at the American Legion VFW, the grocery store, the, they do not wanna take on more debt. And I know it's, and I hear that, you know, well, it's CRA money. It's not really taxpayers' money. It is taxpayers' money. They have to get it to be able to give it back to us. So I just would like us, as a council, to focus on what we need. I mean, we have beautiful parks going up. We have a culture center coming. We have a splash pad coming. Why can't we just take a break and stop taking on debt? Use the CRA money to help businesses? Look at how many empty spaces in commercial property we have here. What are we doing to attract businesses here? There's just so much more we could do. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? We're gonna do a motion with some change.
Okay. The one, the one thing that I have to say is, I think that there's some confusion. The confusion is that we are taking care of wastewater and stormwater issues. We've done a lot of upgrades in the last three years. Since I've been on council, I know we've done larger pipes. We have improved the lift stations. We've improved the wastewater plant. We're working on so many different things. And we're doing a study for the Center Street Stormwater Project. The American Rescue Plan will pay for some of that. But when we're talking about budget, we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about stormwater wastewater fund. And this is the CRA fund, which tonight was approved. We approved it, five to zero. So I would like to make a motion. Are we ready for a motion on this? Because I'm ready to make a motion to approve this with the amendments that we've talked about here. I'm ready to go on this. I think we need to move forward. I think we need to take the opportunity. When the opportunity knocks, we are addressing, the other issues are being addressed.
Mr. Mayor, before y'all move forward with it, is this council open to having a workshop at the October meeting before we move forward on this?
This has been an agenda item, and it's agendaed. And I let people speak on a consent agenda item. That's not normally done. But I wanna hear everybody. And I've heard a lot of stuff tonight that's misleading. I had a lot of, I've heard a lot of truths. I got no problem with truths. But when you bend the truth and make it misleading, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back at you with it. But I'm not gonna say anymore. I'm not gonna hear anymore.
So you've heard enough? You've engaged with the citizens enough?
I think that we're starting to repeat, you know, every time there's something.
Well, this would be my motion if I feel that there's consensus.
It's delay, delay, delay.
It's not a delay.
It is a delay.
We can, we can close.
It is a delay constantly with you.
Keep the closing date the exact same.
We're gonna do it. We're gonna do it.
All right. Could I make a motion to approve this?
This is...
Go ahead, make a motion.
Before you move, I wanted to give you the opportunity to engage the residents. I know, I seem like that was enough. You've had enough from the citizens?
I've had enough.
All right, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion.
I've engaged the residents all year long.
Excuse me. I mean, I think we've heard your objections. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract, to purchase the sale of this property with the amendments that we talked about here tonight. And is anyone going to second?
I second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on item number seven, to approve the purchase or the sale of the building, 7404 North Atlantic Avenue, with the amended changes. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember McCollum?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Motion passes. I got, presented a card.
Mayor, would you like to take an 8:00 PM break?
We need a break. Y'all wanna take a break? It's up to council.
I think that would, depending on, obviously, it's your meeting. I would move for recess unless you have something...
We need a break. We'll take a break?
Yep.
We'll talk after the break. We've had our say. Already put to bed. Take a 10-minute break.
I do have a card. Let me ask before we get into the public hearings. I got presented a card before. And it's anything on the agenda. And it's a public, public hearing or a public participation item. Do we want to hear the lady talk?
Yes.
Counsel? It's a counsel, uh.
Anytime we can engage the citizen.
Mrs. Morrissey. Please speak in the microphone. You got three minutes and we're gonna move on.
Okay. I started coming to city council meetings a couple of years ago. My name is Katie Morrissey. I'm a property owner and business owner in the city. So I started coming to meetings a couple of years ago and I've since met most of the members up here and a lot of people in the city, been to hit City Hall so many times. And I would like to say that I'm, I'm very proud of the work that people do on the city council. It takes a lot of, a lot of work and patience. To be a good team member, you have to be informed and reasonable and cooperative. And your role here is to get things done, to do your homework ahead of time, come in here, vote on things, make decisions, let people get back to their lives. But I stopped coming to the city council meetings because there was one member in particular who was not cooperative, not informed before meetings, argumentative, ranting, rambling. And meetings that should have only taken an hour or an hour and a half would take three hours. And as someone who's hired and fired many people over several careers, I know that there are some personalities that just don't work in an organization. And so I stopped coming to city council meetings. And now I've started again and I see that the same dynamic is here. And I'd like to express my sympathies to the board members who have to deal with someone who's very uncooperative and not a good team member and not showing very good leadership, I might add. And also disrespectful of time. This isn't just about you. This is about the other people on the council and also the community members who would like to be involved in the city and participate and contribute. But when there are people who really poison the well, it's not a pleasant environment. So I would like to just say thank you for the work, the positive work that you do. And I would hope that some people would learn how to be a better team player. Thank you. And if you have any questions, you know where to find me.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number eight on the agenda is ordinance 2721. Mr. Garganese, second reading.
Yep. Ordinance number zero nine dash, whoops, my bad. Yeah. There we go. Ordinance number 27 dash 21. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending section 58 dash one of the city code related to local public notices for future land use map amendments, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporation into the code severability in an effective date. Again, this is second and final reading of this ordinance. There haven't been any changes to this ordinance since first reading. I'd happy, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have. Otherwise, the ordinance is presented for final approval. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do you have any questions on it? No, we did receive a letter of their reception to the, to this, did we not? I said, did we not receive a letter in reference to this from Department of Economics or something for this land use change that we made?
Dave, he's, mayor is referring to state level department that was.
Oh, I didn't see it back there.
It's not this item.
Yeah, that, mayor, the, the letter that you're referring to is in regards to the property rights element that the council will be considering here in just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I remember it. Read it, but I don't remember all the facts. All right, so we're, we're into this. This has to be done off and on. Different things pop up and I don't know if anybody has anything they want to discuss on it or not much we can do to change anything. This was done back sometime again too before.
Are you ready for a motion?
Well, I want to see if there's anybody has anything to discuss. No discussion, we'll go with a motion.
I don't want to support it for those reasons.
Hey, I just had a lady comment to me too. I'll just comment that she said that she gets a lot of her information from Facebook on what we do. And she says that prompts her to pay attention to what we're doing. And she's not here in the audience, so I'd have her verify that. She was here talking to me. Thanked me for the way that the city notifies, but she said she looks at Facebook dearly and follows the city on Facebook. So that's my comment on the thing.
No, I think that's great. So could we create a provision that allows people to opt out of certified mail?
I don't even know why we'd want to do certified mail because a lot of the people, we found out over the years that we do certified mail, which we were doing before. A big percentage of the envelopes, the people aren't there no more. So you wasted community funds to send a thing at five, six dollars, whatever it costs. At that time, it was five dollars almost, plus all the staff time and getting it ready, the cost of getting it ready. And we would send out things and there was very small response, so.
I still think that certified mail has the highest.
Five hundred people at five dollars or six dollars is a lot of money to waste in my book to send somebody a notice that they don't even show up and don't care.
Well, it, I still think that certified mail has the highest success rate for a delivery. And I understand there's a cost with it. And we made all the private developers use certified mail. But when it's now the city wants to do a land use change, we're, we're not going to impose the same rules on them. And so there's a reason we made developers or private property owners who wanted a variance or some sort of land use change do it. It's because we knew that it was a successful way. And it certainly has a cost, but for me, again, due to the significance of what we're doing to people's properties here, we're changing their land use. We're moving the goalposts after the ball's kicked. I mean, they live there and, and we're changing the way they can use their land. I think that's very significant. And to me, I, I like the idea that people who are, want to get emails or use Facebook or other methods, they could, or just, they want to opt out to regular mail. That would be, I think, a very adaptive way to, to kind of give people the option of how they want to be notified for these things, but still be able to send mail to those people and ensure that they know that we're making this, this change, so.
I think what you're referring to is the land use changes that we've been through. Basically, we took a residential area that was the majority, vast majority of it, and made it commercial, or I mean, vice versa, it was commercial and made it residential because that's all that's on the road anyway. That was the majority of the change. And those people, I didn't hear anybody screaming about going to residential because that's what's there.
The, the meeting, we notified, it was standing room only. It was shoulder to shoulder in here. I was at the meeting. Dave Dickey led the meeting, so to say that the citizens.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
You said, I said this, I said. I didn't say that. I said. The land use changes that we did go through were mainly going from commercial to residential because ninety-nine, nine point nine percent of the property that got changed is now residential. It's not commercial. And the area right behind City Hall, Point Santa Avenue is another one.
No, I'm saying, but you said you didn't hear a lot of people who really cared.
A few people that.
Yeah, it was standing room only in here.
I'm not going to even discuss it no more. This is the second reading we've been through with that.
Sure, we're on the same page, yeah.
Well, okay. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, sir.
Ms. Kellum?
Yes, I, I agree with Councilman Morrison. I, I think that, you know, when we do this, not everybody's on Facebook. Not everybody's on computers. There's older people that don't have either one of them. And for a budget of thirty million dollars, I think, I mean, if we did it every day and sent certified mail every day, I could understand. But when it happens and when we need to do it, that's the best way to engage the citizens and let them know what's happening. I think it's worth the money. Thank you.
Through, finished?
Mayor, I'd like to say something. I think the U.S. Post Office does a fine job. And I think that if we send a letter, I think that will be sufficient at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, you got anything you want to put into this?
You know, I understand what Mrs. Kellum and Mr. Morrison are saying, but I think the Post Office does an excellent job. And we're talking about cost. I think the city doesn't need to take on this cost. And I think the way it's set up right now, I think it works fine. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Ready for a motion?
Public hearing. Nope, we got a public hearing. I don't have any cards on it. Anybody have anything they want to put in on this? Come back to the dais, we'll close public hearing and look for a motion if we're through.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept ordinance number 272021 as written.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brown and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to accept ordinance 2721. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, item number nine, ordinance number 352021, second reading, Mr. Garganese.
Okay, ordinance 35 dash 2021, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending section 38 dash 33 of the city's fire prevention and protection code related to private entry gates, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporation into the code severability and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this item, also a public hearing item. We don't have any changes to this ordinance since first reading. The ordinance is being recommended by the fire department. Happy to answer any questions, and I think the deputy chief is in the audience too in case you have any additional questions. Ms. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel?
No comments.
I have no comments.
Fine. Fine, no comment.
I have no cards on this item. Does anybody want to say anything on this item? All we're doing here for the public that's not aware is that we're changing an ordinance and a activation for homeowner gates for the fire department and the peace officers where they just blow the siren and open the gate automatically. They're going to a new megahertz system on the radio systems and their sirens will be silent, if I'm not mistaken. A silent frequency that puts it out and the gate will open on that. So we won't be hearing the sirens blowing at your gate when the ambulance comes in or something. But it will for a time change until the gates get obsolete, then it changes. That's basically what our ordinance says. Mr. Chris, am I correct kind of on that, sir?
Correct. Mine is seven.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, he's here to answer questions. But that's basically in a nutshell what we're passing.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 35 dash 2021.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Angela Raymond and a second by Councilperson Nikki Kellum. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, ordinance number 37 2021, first reading, Mr. Garganese.
Ordinance number 37 dash 2021, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending the definition of city park set forth in section 54 dash one of the city code, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporation into the code severability and an effective date. As you noted, Mayor, this is first reading of this ordinance. If you recall, some time ago, the city council adopted a new future land use map designation and a new zoning district designation for conservation areas and, and public recreation. And the council went through an administrative rezoning process to clean up the zoning map, to apply the conservation and the public recreation zoning designations on the official maps. Recently, we were dealing with a, you know, an issue. We had a discussion and realized that given the new changes that the council adopted for the future land use map and the zoning map, the definition, existing definition of city park in the code needed to be updated to be consistent with the new designations that the council approved. So that's what this ordinance proposes to do, change the definition of city park to take into account the new designations that were approved and applied. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Counsel, questions? Down on the far end of the dais, questions?
No, sir.
Nikki, nothing?
No questions.
Mike? This is a public hearing item again. Is anybody? We don't have any cards, so if nobody wants to talk, we'll close public hearing and bring it back to the dais. For a motion. Ordinance 37 2021.
I move that we approve ordinance number 37 dash 2021.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond and a second by Councilmember Brown to pass ordinance 37 2021. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, brings us to item number 11, ordinance number 39 2021. First reading, Mr. Garganese.
Ordinance number 39 dash 2021, an ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopted in furtherance of the requirements set forth in section 2.12, subparagraph 5, Cape Canaveral Charter, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $1,200,000 capital improvement revenue note, series 2021 of the city, to finance the cost of the purchase of the promenade and related capital improvements and cost of issuance, providing for the series 2021 note to be secured by the city's public service tax, half-sent sales tax, guaranteed entitlement, communication service tax, and certain franchise fees, authorizing the city's financing team to proceed to develop the necessary documents, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions or parts of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions in conflict here with severability and an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance and the. date. This is first reading of this ordinance, and the title of the ordinance is pretty self-explanatory. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Start down here, Ms. Raymond.
I'm very much in favor of this. As I said...
Excuse me? I'm very much in favor. I support this ordinance, and I hope that it will get approved. I'm very much in favor. I think we've discussed it enough tonight. Thank you.
Brown? Down to your direction. No comments? Mr. Morrison?
Yep. Obviously, I don't, I don't support this. I think we should be taking on, if we're going to take on debt for other things, we kind of got two items in one by pulling the consent agenda item. I think all the points have been expressed there on why I would not support this. It's about priorities, and I don't think we're funding our priorities first. Those are, those are not getting done, and we're, we're going to move forward with this. And so I don't support it for those reasons.
Ms. Cullum?
Yeah, I, it says, um, the promenade and related capital improvements. What are the related capital improvements?
Mayor, if I may, and...
I'm looking at John, but I guess he's going to stay quiet. Go ahead.
And I'll let John correct me where I'm wrong. The thinking is that this is going to be the money needed to secure the purchase of the property, the closing costs. There are costs for our due diligence, for the environmental assessment, any inspections that we have to do. There's costs for the demolition, and hopefully, there's money left over that we can possibly, maybe, start looking at the design fees. That would go into, those are the related things, based on how much is available once all that is done. We haven't secured all of the costs yet for the demolition and the environmental assessment. We have a good idea of what it's going to be, but we will know once we get all those final numbers. John, is there anything you can add to that?
I can add that my microphone won't turn on, but I will say, no, that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it, you know? And if every dollar is spent, it'll flow into the whole grounds of the cap, improvement of the grounds and everything else that's involved in the project. But that's it. Thank you.
We want to stretch the dollar as much as we can on this.
Right.
So the one point two million includes the demolition?
It should be able to.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Hello, anything to add? It's a done deal as far as I'm concerned. Let's move on. Public? No questions, so we'll come back to the dais for a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number thirty-nine, twenty, twenty-one.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, second by Councilmember Brown to accept ordinance thirty-nine, twenty, twenty-one. That's the first reading. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Cullum?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, that finishes up our agenda, and we have reports. Ms. Cullum, do you want to do a report?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Morrison?
Yes, I'd like the council to consider bringing public meetings where citizens from home can engage. I know we decided to not fund the continuation of that contract in the hope, and I, and I think we had a good agreement that we would find a lower cost alternative. But honestly, what we were paying for what we were getting, to me, was well worth it. You know, citizens don't want to come to this meeting, some of them, for reasons of COVID. Some are, I talked to one tonight. He said, I'm going to stay home, and he felt, he felt safer there. So to me, you know, we canceled Friday Fest, an outside event that, that we felt was a, a risk to the public. And then that same month, we don't, we don't offer citizens the opportunity to engage from home. And so we, we livestream it, just so the public knows where you can obviously watch it, but there's no opportunity for someone to call in and to engage. And so I think every meeting that goes by that we limit that, I think it, it hurts our engagement that we need to bring back. And it's hard to put a price tag on that, but I think that's something that would, would really improve. And I'd like to see it if the contract is still, I know we said we're not going to fund the renewal, but I think we, if we still have remaining time left on it, we're paying for it and we're not using it. I know that it requires some extra staff cost and time. But again, one citizen having the opportunity to engage, I think, is the right move, especially for the reasons they're not coming. And so that was something I wanted to, to make a motion on and say, can we activate and bring back the two-way communication? Obviously, tomorrow's the next budget hearing. If we could do it by tomorrow, that would be great. Matter of sending out a link, advert, sending out an email to say, here's how you log on, or if not by, by tomorrow, by the next October meeting. So wanted to get your thoughts on that. And if it seems like something we want to do, I would, I would move that we, we do that.
I'll second that. I think we had brought that up in the last meeting about continuing the webinar until the end of the, in December, I think it was said that. And I think it's important, you know, people can see, but they can't comment. And there's a lot of people that don't want to come down here or can't come down here. I think it's important to engage the citizens as much as possible.
I agree that we need two-way engagement with citizens. I don't know at this point, like tomorrow, if we have that, or anything that citizens can be part of these council meetings on.
Yes, I want to report. I'm on the board of Space Coast League of Cities, and I just wanted to share with you a few things. We gave ten thousand dollars out in scholarships plus dinner to the recipient and their family. I would love to be able to give this scholarship to a Cape Canaveral resident. However, we have not had anyone apply in recent years. And I just want to encourage people to please, please, apply for the scholarship. I've been on the scholarship committee for the last three years, and I think it's a very important work that I do. I would also like to talk to you about the priorities that our board has listed for Space Coast League of Cities for the legislative. We're going to be talking about vacation rentals. We're going to talk about home rule once again. And we're going to talk about the, the lagoon naturally, that's a priority, and many other things, such as supporting revenues collected from the communication service tax and local business tax. We're going to talk about that. And these are the priorities, and also about, as I said, science and talking about taking some of the problems that we've had in the past with chemicals out of groundwater and different things like that. Also, I just want to talk to you about, I am going to give a speech at the legislative meeting for Brevard, which is next week. I think it's next Wednesday, three, three o'clock, at the government building in Viera. And I'll be talking about elections for municipal officials. And normally speaking, these are conducted by each city in accordance with locally voted upon municipal charters. And naturally, these are unique to each city. And the reason why we have it set up the way we do, we do three-year terms, and we have more experienced and less experienced people coming in on three years. And that's, that's a good way to do this because there's an overlap. And I think that this is a home rule issue. It should be decided locally. So I'll be speaking about this at the legislative meeting. Anybody can come. It's open to the public. And I think it's a good opportunity to see how our government works. These things are spoken about, and then later, the legislation, legislative will decide what to do. That's about it. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
I don't really have anything. General, your report. I think the city's doing great. Financially, we're doing good. We're moving along. That's what needs to be done. Sit and be stagnant. Raise taxes if you don't have things happening. But I don't, I don't have any report. We're all through.
Do you need a motion to try and bring back the two-way, Todd?
No, we're finished with this discussion.
Want to see it for the October meeting, if we can?
To get consensus, I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a motion on the, there was a motion on the floor. I wanted to go back and address that. So, you know, there is a motion on the floor, maybe the clerk can repeat it, but if there's, if there's, I think that needs to be dispensed with.
Generally, there was a motion on the floor by Councilmember Morrison to bring the virtual feature of go-to webinar back as an engagement.
What's the cost?
Well, I mean, I think the, I think the motion was to bring it back as an item.
Bring it back, but Mrs. Cullum made the original motion, I believe.
No, Wes made the motion. I seconded it.
You seconded it, okay. But this is, this is something that we did away with last meeting, basically. Now they want to bring it back and...
Yes, for consideration at another meeting.
We got a motion, so I would think that a motion's not proper because it's not an intended item for a motion. I don't have a problem with hearing, with hearing the motion.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
That what I heard Councilmember Morrison say, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that you would like this council to get a consensus on either bringing the engagement feature back tomorrow at tomorrow's meeting or at the October regular city council meeting? Is that correct?
Yes, but there was a motion, motion made.
And he said he would like to make the motion. And then Nikki seconded it.
You are correct. I wanted to, you're right. I wanted to talk, I'm, I think I will make another motion.
You would, if you got consensus.
You got it.
Right.
So I was just gathering the feel, and I think Monday, Councilmember Ray made it clear, he doesn't think tomorrow's a good idea. I don't disagree with that. So I think we're really talking about October. And our city attorney spoke about, we want to bring it back as an agenda item to consider. I, I would like to see it just brought back. I think staff knows how to execute on it, especially if we still have the subscription paid for through the end of the year. Do we have remaining months that we've already paid for?
I, I need to cut, I need to go back and...
We're going to research that and provide that information in the agenda item.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if, if, I would say that if, if we do have remaining subscription time that we've paid for, I would, my request is that we activate it and execute on it October. But in addition to that, is to bring the agenda item back to consider renewing that contract. So basically, October meeting would either involve, we are going live that meeting because we still got remaining time on it, and it works for staff, and we can talk about whether or not we want to extend that contract or use another company or something. So kind of the immediate need mixed in with, because eventually, that contract's going to run out if, if it hasn't already, right? So...
Do we have an idea when our contract ends? When does it end?
Mia, you would have a better sense than I would.
I tried to bring it up in our records, and all I could find, without going into BSNA, because I can't get into that module, it looks like it might have termed in April twenty, twenty-one. But I have this feeling that we went ahead and extended it. I'm just not finding that document.
Let us, let us take a look at it because when we, when we did circumvent that, the, let's just take a look and see where it's at. We'll get the cost for you, and, you know, we'll, we'll give you a clear answer on that. Because I, I can't recall when it, when it actually ended, but I know we can't, we were funding it, and...
And we may have renewed it.
Yeah, and we may have, we may have renewed.
I'm pretty sure we did.
And I think we'll need to talk with Molly Thomas, too. Yeah, let me talk to the fellow directors who are handling it. I'll get you, get you an answer.
Any sense in bringing it back would be a new contract, if I'm...
Let us look and see what the terms were, and maybe that doesn't need to be done, and we could avoid that step and, you know, continue it.
We already have a log me in feature.
Right.
Which allows people to work remotely. So that's under that umbrella, correct? I don't think it would be that big a deal.
I don't think it's going to be that difficult, and I think we could make it.
Why did we get rid of it to start with?
What's that?
My question would be, why did we end it to get rid of it to start with?
That's, I can't answer that question.
Well, there was funding, and then the amount of people that participated was what we were probably...
There, there was an agenda item where the council discussed that. What we'll do is we'll provide you the minutes of that meeting and also that item that goes over all the things we discussed, and that should give us a good sense of what the reason was that we decided to go. We'll forward that to you. Mia, can you make sure the council gets that tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll have, we'll have a vote on the motion. There was a motion on the floor.
So I think I, I need to restate a motion because I said I would. So I move to bring that agenda item back for consideration when staff does research for the October regular council meeting. And in the event prior that we still have runway, for lack of better words, remaining months, that staff provides an update on whether or not they can do it live for October. So it's really two things that, that, that we'd like to do. So that's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Put that into two separate motions, or do we need to bag it into one?
I'm happy to.
Can we bag that into one motion, one way or another?
You could do it in one motion if there's three of you to agree, or alternatively, if you want to take it as a separate motion, you can have a motion to sever the question and break it into two votes, separate votes. That's the procedural.
They're not mutually...
Would you like to make your motion as one motion, or you choose to make it two? However you make it, that's what we'll do.
Two is cleaner. I move to consider, to bring back an agenda item for October, to consider renewing the contract for go-to meeting or some other application.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. We got a motion by Councilmember Morrison and a second by Councilmember Brown to bring the item back to the meeting in October. With all the information that you can gather for us, please?
Have it tomorrow.
Tomorrow's meeting, I mean, but it's October. You want to...
And...
In tomorrow's meeting. I said, you said October.
If Todd, if Todd wants to do that, it doesn't have to be...
We'll, we'll have the, the past action and all the bullet points from that tomorrow. You'll have that.
Tomorrow. Okay, for tomorrow's meeting, you said October. That's what you mean.
I did say October, but Todd's actually...
You want, what for tomorrow?
I just mean by email. It's not going to be part of...
It's exceeding my expectations, so...
It's just going to be an email to the council members, not part of the agenda.
You got it. Okay. That's great. Thank you.
And is there some way we can put that email out to the public so that they got public notice on it? Facebook, whatever?
The reasons why it was canceled, that's what the email's going to be. I'm not sure if that's an appropriate Facebook item.
Public information.
Yeah.
I think we canceled it because there was, wasn't a lot of participation.
There wasn't a lot of participation. In the last meeting, we had zero people.
We're going to get the information.
But I think if we, if we initiate it again, and people can listen and, and make a comment, it might, we might get, I mean, I, I think it's important to engage the people as much as can, and, you know, versus the cost of it and, and getting out to the people, our meetings, and they, and they can participate, I think is important. So...
Our sound quality, Mia, was bad on it. Is there...
There was a glitching problem.
And I think when we decided to end it, we, we also said that we wanted to look into another company or something that we could continue it with.
I think you could copy and paste the exact last, it's reconsidering an agenda item, but add in other options, if there are any, so we can get around the, the issues of cost and resources.
We'll at least get the past action out tomorrow.
Yes, that sounds... Yes, that sounds great. And I don't know if you want a separate motion. I, I think consensus is enough for me, is to know, if we can make, if you can, we can go live in October and offer some two-way with the, because we have the capability in our contract, that would be great, and, and that's, that's enough for me.
We'll see what it says, and we'll talk about it tomorrow night.
Sounds good, thank you.
Tomorrow, we'll talk about it. So call the roll, I guess, on the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
All right, anybody else have anything that they, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I want to talk about signs and temporary signs and the, what the sign code says about, about the election period. And I want to thank Councilmember Morrison, he was into the city hall today, and I believe he said the department exceeded all expectations with the permitting process, so thank you for that. What the code says is during the period 30 days before an election, that triggers something. 30 days, so that's, October 2nd is 30 days before the election. Beginning that date, what it triggers is you can have multiple signs, multiple temporary signs on one piece of property that you couldn't normally have the rest of the year. So as you're telling your friends and your constituents about the sign code and educating them, we want to make sure that that time period is, is honored, that we aren't seeing multiple signs on pieces of property prior to October 2nd. Otherwise, that creates a lot of work for code enforcement. Just want to educate on that point. The multiple signs happens after October 2nd, and that's all, Mayor.
Okay.
Anybody else? Garganese, they got you?
Uh, no report.
No news? Well, just give everybody a fair shot, because I hear about it. All right, nobody. Meeting adjourned. Good night.